All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, February 13 study session. Calling this meeting to order, and I'll have our city clerk start with our roll call.
Mayor E. Clark?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Karen Howe?
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb?
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Kent Train?
Here.
Councilmember Sid Gupta?
Here.
Councilmember Roshean O'Farrell?
Here.
Great, thank you. And I will have Councilmember Lamb lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Great. Councilmember Gupta, do you mind reading the land acknowledgement?
Just as soon as I pull it up. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. So, oh yeah, we don't have to approve the agenda, do we? That's so weird. Yeah. All right. So first up is our discussion on our proposed regional agenda. So I will pass it off to Rachel and Mike.
Good evening, councilmembers. So Rachel Bianchi, Deputy City Manager, pleased to be up here with you this evening talking about this important effort. Our goal here for a regional agenda is to provide both all of you and staff with clear direction on high-level, multi-year priorities. So I know many of you are on regional committees. So what this allows you to do is to advocate for things that you then know that your fellow councilmembers are fully behind. So for instance, I think of the Eastside Transportation Partnership, I think of PIC, right, with Sound Cities Association. It also very clearly provides a roadmap for staff, right, to be doing what we know that you want us to be doing. It is also an opportunity for us to find ways to support the community. However, it's also an opportunity to find ways to support the region. And I think that's a really important thing for us to really think about as we move forward. As staff, we recognize we have an opportunity to improve the city's reputation with other governments and organizations, and an adopted regional agenda that really focuses on that collaboration, I think, would be really helpful for that. So on a quick note of collaboration, in your packet, we provided a sample letter that the city of Woodinville had asked us to do to support their RACE grant. This is a very classic example of something that we would do to, again, raise that profile and that reputation in the region. Our suggestion, and this is best practice and this is done, you know, in lots of cities, is that things like this don't need to come to council, per se, right? Because these are not in conflict with any policies that you have set forward, right, or any agendas. They're sort of for the good of the order, right, for our work in the region. The other thing I would say is that similarly, when we are asked for support letters that are directly aligned with your agenda, that we can go ahead and have the mayor, as your elected representative, sign on to those. And Councilmember Stewart brought up a really great example of the House Bill 1433, right? That is an opportunity, we as staff think, and again, this is best practice done all throughout the region, that if it's in alignment, we could have the mayor move forward. So that's something that we would like, as you have this conversation, to get your comfort level on that as well. And a regional agenda is never going to be all-encompassing of everything we want. It just isn't. If our goal would be to keep it to two pages, right, that's something that we can all work off of. Things may come, things may go, you know, we'll change this, you know, on a semi-regular basis. However, these are long-term projects that we're really looking at, as you can see from the document that's in front of you. So I'll just close with, you know, we tried to brainstorm things that we've heard from you over the years, over the months, in my case. But we're looking forward to this conversation, because we're going to have sort of a high-level conversation and look for how we can incorporate your feedback into the next version, which we would bring back to you in track changes, so that you can see that your thoughts are reflected there. So with that, Mayor, I will turn it back to you.
Great, thank you. So I think we've had one question via email, so I don't know if anyone has any other questions or thoughts about the draft agenda or the regional agenda. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so did you want, like, feedback on, like, the specific items and what else we think we might want to add to that? Do you want that now, or would you rather have that just in email and then you can bring it back?
I think we were open to have a bit of a discussion about it, if that works for the council.
Yeah, I think you mentioned, like, of course, wordsmithing, we could do that all night, but like, big ideas, I think that's awesome to bring up, yeah.
And I think if we maybe want to go by topic area, that might be the best way to kind of go around the dais, if that works for the council. So maybe starting with transit and transportation, see if there's anything specific there.
Great. I'll let you do a round robin, then.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we'll go ahead and start, if you have something for, unless you need a moment.
Sure. No, for the transit piece, one of the things that I would like to see on there is also a Metro Flex expansion. So Metro Flex is a really cool program, but it's very limited in our city, and there are lots of people who can't take advantage of that. I'd also love to see us get restrictions lifted on the use of the park-and-ride. Now, there may be other conversations around our park-and-ride, but because it's underutilized right now, to be able to allow, even if it means having to charge for, but allow other agencies to use that. I'd also love to see us have some conversations around better connections, not just through sound transit or King County Metro, but just better connections to the light rail in general, like however that may be. And I don't know, right, I know, like, there are programs, like in Bellevue, like the Bellhop program. So I don't know if that's something that we would want to look and see if we could get a group of cities to have that and we get better deals on it, or, I don't know, right, but just to kind of do some of that. And then there's a section on school partnerships, so I don't know if this would fall into that one or this one, but I thought of it in the transit section, which is to discuss partnering with the schools on, like, buses, right, or how we get kids to school. Because again, the school bus routes are often very, very long, which discourages people from having their kids ride the bus, which creates more traffic and less kids ride the bus, and you can see it's kind of a downward spiral. So I think that would be cool. And then there wasn't really, I think I kind of covered this, but like, just the whole of how do we have connections that are maybe non-motorized options, right, and really focusing on the non-motorized parts? And where it talks about, like, legislation on e-bikes, I would love to talk about, like, not just how do we make them safe and, you know, electric scooters, but how do we make them work for us, right? How do we make them really a more integral part of our transportation system? But I probably should have started with this. I love the idea of this, so thank you for pulling this together.
Thank you.
And one comment, just on the letters, like, if there are letters that we're going to sign on to. I think we passed a rule that said they would just go on the consent agenda, so that there's sort of a public notice, so people know, including other councilmembers. Like, we don't have any other way of knowing that we sent a letter, so it's always a little bit jarring when somebody says, "Oh, thank you for sending us such-and-such a letter." And I'm like, "Oh, we did," right? So I think that's our rule, is that it can come on a consent agenda. If it needs to be signed because the timing doesn't work out, then the consent agenda can just, item can just be an FYI, but the preference would be that it just comes through on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb, do you have transit and transportation comments?
I thought this list was really great. It was really comprehensive, and it included, as I was going through the list, I was thinking, wow, they really covered almost everything that we have brought up for the last year, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say the same. It kind of covers from, like, localized to really branching out to that regional look, so I definitely support this section. Council, sorry, Deputy Mayor Howe?
I just had a quick question, really. I liked it, and it was so specific, though, about affordable housing at the South San Amish Park-and-Ride. And I wondered, can we extend it just a tiny bit to be, just that there's always a linkage between transit and affordable housing, that that linkage never gets disconnected? Because we don't know when we'll be able to do something like this, but that's sort of an undercurrent or a theme that, this is, you know, personally, I'd like to see us drive it home over and over and over again, because you know how it gets split apart? Affordable housing, transit, they are not the same thing, but they are. So that was just, yeah, that was the only thematic thing that I wanted to kind of drive home.
I think there's a way we can finesse that. I think with that bullet point in particular, that's a classic example of neither the city manager nor I would want to approach King County Metro without the specific okay from all of you that that was something that you wanted. But we'll definitely figure out how to make sure that we're talking about transit in those key nodes.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you. I really liked everything on the transit and transportation. I want to just echo a couple of things that Councilmember Stewart said. Certainly, the last mile transit and that expansion, if possible, of the Metro Flex would be, I think that would be a great thing for us to kind of work on. That's often the biggest hindrance to boarding transit is that last mile. And echo the school bus kind of collaboration. And I also support, like, trying to make room for various modes of transportation, and e-bikes particularly. I've heard a lot of that from residents about where does that fit in on our road scheme? Like, where do they belong? Do they belong on the sidewalk? Do they belong in the traffic? And how are we going to figure that out? Because obviously, that's a mode of transportation that's not going to go away. And I think it's probably past time that we figured out, as a region, where that particular mode of transportation fits in on our road system. So, great job, I really liked it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, from what I understand, formalizing this regional agenda is sort of a new step, so I'm very supportive of it. It's very thorough. A couple of things, I do echo Councilmembers Stewart and O'Farrell about the expansion of the Metro Flex program. I actually tried to take it here tonight, and it was like a 45-minute wait, which I understand, but clearly there's demand in our community, so I'd like to see that expanded. I'd like to see the inclusion of mobility hubs under ensuring robust critical infrastructure for alternative commute options. Mobility hubs were brought up in our transit plan as ways to connect our community to our main transit corridor, so as we strive towards that through the regional agenda, I'd like to see that reflected. And also, I'd like to add, working with King County Metro to increase safety and accessibility of transit stops to promote increased ridership, especially with the establishment of Redmond, the light rail in Redmond. That's also reflected in the transit plan. Again, just making it more convenient and more feasible for people to take the bus. Thank you.
Councilmember Train, I'll have you do transit, transportation, and affordable housing, and I want to start bouncing this way, if you can do both of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. So, yeah, the regional, so sticking to their policy already that affordable housing is at transit sites, so I think the city should continue to promote that. The second one would be that light rail, access to light rail at Redmond, how do we do that in a way that, my thinking is, at least the north-end residents have access to Redmond? So how do we provide some kind of transit for them or service to them, whether that be through the e-bike or down to the trail, or if that is that we actually have a looped bus route that does that, that would be awesome. Following that would then lead automatically to how do we solve the challenge of, how do we move constituents to Issaquah when it comes in 2041? So I know that's a little longer down the road, but that is a regional plan that is going to be coming, and so how do we get ahead of that one? Because we will be behind on the Redmond one. And so that would be the things there. As far as, well, and connectivity, but I think we cover that also in another section as well, but connectivity for the e-bikes is definitely, how do you blend those two together? Affordable housing, I think staff is working on definitely the, back to follow the law, what state law is telling us that we have to do. Let's get our comprehensive plan in order. Let's make sure our strategies are in place, and then let's look to see how we can take advantage of the opportunities when they come in the existing business districts and/how does the town center move forward as far as with affordable housing. And then I think the other one that's, we could do a much better job with the city is in the ADU program. There's some older properties that are larger properties in the city that ADUs would be able to be built on them and would be able to provide affordable, some affordable housing within the district. Thank you.
Councilmember Gupta for affordable housing? Councilmember O'Farrell?
Excuse me, I didn't really have anything to add, except I wanted to point out that third point that we have about exploring partnerships with faith-based organizations, and I think that is something where we may, in the future, have some opportunity. I think some of our faith-based organizations in San Amish are going through some changes and realigning of their parishes and their resources, and that might be an option that they may be considering. So I think that's really worth actively pursuing and seeing how our faith-based organizations, are they thinking on that? Is that an item that they've even considered, and maybe that we would have some movement there? It's probably one of our best opportunities to get some affordable housing, is with public-private partnerships like that, so I was really pleased to see that, so thank you.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
Thanks. I think mine is a bit of a question, because I'm not sure where this fits in, if it's affordable housing or not, but if there are programs or policies that we can put in place that would help people keep their housing before they lose it. So that could be something as straightforward as home repair types of programs or supports that can be very inexpensive but difficult to actually do, given the fact the resources are constrained in terms of folks that can do that kind of work. But there may be an opportunity to just kind of add that in as a support, to keep people in their housing.
Yeah, kind of the same. I don't really have anything to add, but I would definitely love an arch project one day, so glad that that's in there. Councilmember Lamb?
I just wanted to mention about collaboration with cities, particularly in light of what happened in Kenmore, and the last I heard was that Redmond was going to pick up that project, and they were having a special meeting about that. And so I guess, I guess my comment would be, where do we fit in the picture within those conversations? And do we meet with our neighboring cities with regard to affordable housing? Because so much is happening so fast, and so much is being built, and somehow, I feel like we're a little left out of the conversation. So I guess it's a question, do we meet with our neighboring cities about their plans for affordable housing, and like, can we, like, somehow work with them to, you know, learn more, you know, what organizations are working well with them that we could, you know, leverage?
And I think that's exactly why we're here, Councilmember Lamb, is because I think we're left out of those conversations, because people don't think that we want to be at that table. And so we're looking for clear direction that you want us at that table, and they won't get at that table.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, if you do housing and sustainability, and then we'll come back.
Awesome. I love the serpentine. Affordable housing, so I think Deputy Mayor Howe already mentioned this, but we say specifically around town center, but I think all of our, not just town center, but maybe our other business centers as well, right, where we can have mixed use. So maybe just be a little more expansive, again, trying to keep it short, but to not be too pigeonholed on that. It felt like, and this is where I guess I have a little bit of a question, so we talk about the regional priorities, and we have state legislative priorities, but this does feel like this should be all-encompassing, almost including some of that. I know we'll have very specific state-led priorities that we're going to go for each year, but the things that we're looking at, they're probably fit in here. And the reason I think about that is when I think about, how do we, from a broader perspective, incentivize affordable housing through taxes, zoning, you know, utility breaks, I don't know, whatever all those things could be? Those all feel like they're part of not just, you know, King County and our neighboring cities, but possibly at a state level. So I don't know if that, if this document is intended to be sort of that overarching or not, but that kind of came to mind. The TDR program, I noticed that was in sustainability, and maybe we don't want to put it in both places, but I see the TDR program as being an integral part of affordable housing incentives as well. And then lastly, one of the things that felt a little bit missing was, we have a mandate to go do transitional housing as well, right, not just affordable housing. And so that felt like that should probably be in here, and that does feel like something we should be working. Maybe we don't work with, per se, to do it, but lots of conversations with the region on how best to make that happen. And there may be regional solutions where we could form partnerships, where somebody kind of does things in multiple cities, and we could do it at scale more effectively or something like that. So I just wanted to make sure we, I know that's going to be a really hard thing for us to do, but we do have, isn't it like 350 or something, on that order of magnitude of transitional housing units as well? So that felt like something we should throw in there. Awesome. Sustainability. I had a question, and now I don't remember what bullet number two is. Oh, yeah, what exactly is bullet number two? So increase sustainability efforts and address climate change by partnering with our neighboring cities. That felt a little too sort of broad, and like, yes, we work with them, but what specifically? I guess maybe that was just a little too broad. We don't talk in here about incentives specifically, so maybe that's really what we're getting at with bullet two, just like with affordable housing. Can we find ways to have regional incentives? Can we do a better job of having consistency in certain types of code? Can we work with the region? One of the things I think we really need to do is making sure that when multifamily developments go in, when multifamily buildings go in, that charging stations need to be built in, and that they have to have a way to charge, the charging back to their utility, so that people who live in multifamily don't have to pay retail rates to charge their EVs. That makes it, that takes away the cost-benefit analysis and makes EVs not affordable for anyone who lives in multifamily. What about, like, code, oh, sorry, what about funding to eliminate fossil fuels, whether it be funding or regional efforts to get rid of fossil fuels from our equipment and municipal vehicles, right? Is that something we should try to solve more regionally? Just like, King County Metro is going to do it, and the state's trying to do it with school buses, is that something we can partner with municipalities on to get better deals or make that work better? There was no mention, and I might be stealing Councilmember Lamb's thunder, but there was no mention about solid waste in our sustainability section. So I feel like there are definitely regional efforts, particularly with King County, on solid waste. I know I'm adding a lot to here, but it's just so good, and it got me so excited. Yeah, that's great. I guess, and I don't know when the right time, but specifically on the Woodinville letter, I love the idea of supporting a neighboring city for something like that, but one of the things that I'm not aware of is, like, did anyone else in the region apply? Like, was Woodinville just, like, how did we choose to say, yes, we support Woodinville? If there was someone else in the region, are we picking Woodinville over somebody else? How do you guys kind of make that determination?
I think that's a great question. So in my previous stops, I would encourage the elected in charge to sign letters for neighboring jurisdictions when we were also going after that grant, right? I don't think that this is one of those things where we need to worry about the pie being scarce, right? We should be broad in our support. And so if other jurisdictions came and said they were going for the same grant, we would say, great, where can we sign, right? Again, it's back to that, how can we collaborate? How can we be a good partner? You know, the next part of this conversation is going to be that kind of a just broad brush of a federal discussion, and I would recommend that to all of you, if we get to the point where we are applying for big federal grants, is that we don't look at it as competition with our peers, but we look at it as, hopefully, we all win.
Got it. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb for sustainability?
I just had a few comments, and Councilmember Stewart was right. I was going to mention, I was actually going to mention REPLUS. REPLUS, the REPLUS pledge that we signed is pretty broad. It would be great to figure out what specific issues that we could work with, within the region, our neighboring cities, to figure out what that would be. The other comment was, bullet number four says, partner with Puget Sound Energy to improve consumer confidence. I guess that wasn't clear, why we need to help them improve consumer confidence. I mean, really, that is in their court, isn't it? I mean, it's up to them to make sure that we're happy and that we think that they're doing everything possible. Like, I didn't understand that, like, I wouldn't mind taking that out, that one phrase, improve consumer confidence. And the other comment was, I'd like to collaborate more with SPW, San Amish Plateau Water. Water is, you know, obviously really important to our community, the importance of high-quality water, and a lot of the issues that they're, that they discuss also affect us, you know? Well, they're talking about PFAS and, you know, their capital needs, and how are they going to work with us in town center? So I guess there's a lot of questions that I feel like we just need to collaborate more and figure out, you know, what we're doing.
Thank you. I will say that the issue of improving consumer confidence is, because we do hear from members of the community hesitation to go towards electrification because of power outages, because when there's a storm and a tree down and things like that. And so our thought, and again, if you all want to take it out, we're fine with that, but just explaining our thought process behind it is trying to get folks to get more confident in that it will be there, and that electrification is truly an option for them and not a limiting factor ultimately, because of a storm, because of an outage, that sort of thing.
The only thing I thought of, of course, was Sustainability Commission, but then I think probably each of them could have, like, you know, support policies, so probably that come from the Sustainability Commission. I'm just excited to see what they come up with, so I think we'll do that, we'll listen to them and their recommendations, so. Deputy Mayor Howe?
I had the struggle with the same confidence question, because I really didn't think that consumers were terribly aware of the grid, per se. The grid is so much more than just the electrification component. So I think it just, if you were wanting broader, I would strike that, just those four words, and just say, you know, help promote electrification, and confidence that they've made a good decision that they don't regret by going forward with electrification because of its security and robustness.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Farrell?
I didn't have anything that was new, that was not already discussed.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just calling on everyone, so. Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, I would echo Councilmember Stewart's comments about bullet two. I talked with staff earlier about some specific actions which maybe don't fit in a regional agenda, but by the same token, I think that just increasing sustainability efforts and addressing climate change is maybe a little broad. So if we could shape that a little bit, I think that would help provide the direction that council and staff could then take to our regional partners.
Councilmember Train, sustainability, and then public safety?
Sustainability, the one thing I see that's glaring and missing is the city's and region's financial sustainability. So I think there needs to be something added in there about how does a city, any city in the region, become financially sustainable over the period of time, a planning period? Maybe it's six years versus the 20-year that the comprehensive plan does, but there definitely should be something in here that says, hey, how are cities able to be financially sustainable over, let's call it a six-year period of time, since that seems to be a good budgeting cycle with the biannual. The rest of it seems pretty good. I think there is some consumer lack of confidence in our energy grid due to the fact that we're burning fossil fuel to get some of our energy through Puget Sound Energy. We're not Seattle, where we're getting all of our utility, our electricity is coming from hydroelectric. So I don't know if I would completely eliminate it, or maybe change the way that it's worded, but there is this idea that, you know, if electrification comes too fast and too furious, that we turn into like a Texas. And if you go one more up than when you start looking at climate change, the severity of the storms that would then be coming, does that overload the grid? And so then you have a complete shutdown. Well, that's not sustainable. And I know that doing the calculations for all that and the modeling for that is not easy and some of it is with outliers, but outliers I think are, if you believe that climate change is real, which I do believe it is, outliers are going to exist and they're going to happen. So planning to be able to mitigate for them makes the city not only sustainable, but also resilient. So that leads me then into public safety, if that's all right with you, Mayor. Good. That, I don't, I think regionally there needs, I, I like your list, by the way. Yay. One, one thing I might add to that, and it kind of runs a little bit into a detail, but at the same time, it's like when fighting forest fires, one of the, I need to, I would really not, due to our PFOS issue, I would really not to like to put retardant down. We have a big lake. It's called Lake Sammamish and we should, we have access to that lake. So if, how in the region can I get a helicopter service or an airplane service that's going to be able to go scoop that water up and drop that down on a fire so that we have an automatic response to a wildfire situation? And, and I think most of those wildfire situations are going to not actually happen in, in our city, but regionally or just outside in, in unincorporated King County along I-90 due to sparks from traffic. And so do we have the ability to work with the region and some of our outlying neighbors who would benefit from this to have that kind of emergency response to mitigate a wildfire? And we got the water. I just need a way to deliver the water to, to the emergency. So I don't see that on here. I just think that's a, if I'm looking regionally and how does Sammamish play a part in that? That's, I got the water.
This, this region does an amazing job of mutual aid. So it's, it is pretty impressive. So I think we could put some language in here about, you know, continuing that commitment to mutual aid because it is something we do well around here.
Yeah. I mean, the, the response when we had the roof fire and Woodinville's ladder truck was here, you know, and put that out and minimal damage, yes. The response time on our EFNR and the services that we have is, and some of the stuff that police and fires done is, or just police too, services, bringing in additional resources to help on that one-off has been amazing. So yeah, I think we should promote all that as well. Thanks.
Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, I think one thing I might like to see reflected here is just a, maybe a continued commitment to working with our neighboring municipalities. I had some conversations with our regional electeds last year talking about, you know, like Isaguayara crime statistician, statistician. And I don't know that we necessarily need that position, but you know, if, if we identify needs in the community and we can work with, you know, Isguay Redman or neighboring municipalities so it's more efficient for everyone, we can share the cost. Just want to make sure that we, one, we know about those opportunities and two, we put staff in a position to take advantage of them when they come up.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
I didn't really have anything major to add. I know we had a wider discussion at our retreat about safety and it was not just about, you know, fire management and wildfires, but it was about more about the, the safety of our residents and the safety of private property, those kinds of issues. And maybe there's, it's worth having a bullet point in there on that particular aspect of safety as well, which is more, more about our day-to-day safety of our city. So, and I won't engage in wordsmithing with you. I think I'll leave that to others, but I think it's worth having something like about that in there that would reflect council priorities and goals.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
So the only thing I would add is to bullet three, it's very specific about east side fire and rescue. And I'm kind of thinking and leveraging like DNR resources or other available partnerships, resources, et cetera, pre-existing material that we could take advantage of and use basically like a template and execute.
Yeah, so regional, I don't know if that would include like CERT training or, you know, if there's anyone in the community that would like to join other communities and do that, you know, if that fits in any of these.
Councilmember Lamb?
So I know we'll be doing the evacuation plan this year and I'd like to make sure that we include Redmond and Isaguay as a part of that. I think it's really important just because wildfires and natural disasters just don't end at our borders. So thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, safety in school districts?
Yeah, thank you. On safety, again, I love it. One thing I might add with the collaboration with the King County Sheriff's Office on recruitment and retention, I would also add accountability, right? To make sure that we have that sort of ongoing dialogue and, and engagement there. On bullet number three, on the collaboration with east side fire and rescue, does that, I would love to see us also maybe add in there, maybe it's not the east side fire and rescue in particular, but when we talk about emergency management, do we want to have a regional response or mitigations for things like extreme weather responses, right? So if we're going to have heating and cooling centers, is that a regional response? Because again, you know, we might have something here at City Hall, but Isaguay might be closer for some of our residents, you know, a location in, in Isaguay. So that might be something that I think we really need to address and that might be a better sort of regional thing. Regional response and mitigations on issues that impact the entire region, like certain types of crime. So when we see a certain kind of crime that's going up and it's impacting the region, can we make sure that we are providing that information and again, collaborating regionally? I think law enforcement, because we're through King County Sheriff's Office certainly has access to that and they may already be doing that, but some of that may just be a communication piece, but just making sure we have that. And then just, I don't know if there's a way to kind of have some generic one in there, but there are lots of regional efforts that get undertaken. For example, right now PSRC is working regionally on traffic and pedestrian safety. And I think from the GMPB meetings I've been forwarding that information on, there's a lot of work that's being done there. There are some certain areas where injury and fatalities have been going up and so they're looking at how they can address that. And that's something that the PSRC is taking on. So I don't know, maybe it's just something where we literally just put something in there about PSRC. They have some amazing efforts and they put a lot of resources and have a lot of great resources that can benefit the cities. For the schools, I think we've talked about most of it. I would just say, do you want to put something in there where we talk about having maybe regular meetings? We used to have recurring meetings with the school districts. I think they were like twice a year we met with each school district or something, just to understand what the current and upcoming issues might be facing, whether it be the school districts, our communities at large, just to keep that line of communication open. But I think we touched on all the other ones.
Thanks. Councilmember Lamb?
I just wanted to ask about the first bullet, the joint use of athletic fields and open space. I know in the last couple of years, we've been working a lot with Lake Washington School District and I don't know how much we're working with Isaguay School District in terms of using their fields. Like for example, I live by Pine Lake Middle School, like I don't ever go by and actually see the gate open for the community being able to use that field. And so are those conversations happening?
So we'll have to have Anjali come back and give you the detailed response, but my understanding is that the school district is not interested in moving forward with the joint use is my understanding. But let's get you the full response from Anjali.
Yeah, I mean, that would be great to understand why they're not interested. No, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anjali is attending remotely. Do you want her to comment?
Sure, that'd be great.
I'll just talk to fill the time until then. I mean, yeah, I love the, this list. I'm still interested in David Pyle giving a Civics 101 to every elementary child. Other than that, this looks great. Deputy Mayor Howe, I'll let you go until Anjali. Oh, she was so fast. Okay. Anjali, did you hear our question?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I did hear the question. For the record, Anjali Meyer, Director of Park's Recreation and Facilities. The city has two very similar inter-local agreements with both the school districts, Lake Washington School District and the Isaguay School District. We actually went about them the same way and for many years we had fields that were shared identical. We improved the fields at Eastlake High School and at the same time, we also improved the fields at Skyline High School. And when it came time to redo the turf at Skyline High School, the Isaguay School District was seeing a change in their school start and end times and they were finding that the hours for community use would go down. And between that and their desire to maintain their own fields, they took back the scheduling for the community. So the community should technically still have the use of those fields after school hours. It's just that the school district then schedules them and not the city.
What about Pine Lake Middle School?
Pine Lake Middle School was built by the school district. The city did not improve those fields. And again, they, so we, you know, they were never discussed as part of the inter-local agreement. We, what we have is an amendment to the inter-local agreement acknowledging that the Skyline High School fields were improved by the city, but we don't have any such language related to Pine Lake Middle School.
Okay, I guess what I struggle with is that, you know, we as residents pay taxes, a lot of taxes for schools here and to not have access to their fields regardless if we paid for their like athletic field improvement in general, we have paid a lot into, you know, the school district.
Fully agree and that is why we have this bullet over here. There is a high demand for athletic fields and it would be great to have, have Isaguay School District come back to where they were some years ago when the city was scheduling their fields.
Is it worthwhile to try to open the conversation again with them, particularly just, you know, just the use of their track, you know, let alone the athletic fields?
I'll just jump in here. Yes, that's why that's here.
Sorry, I'm just like.
Twenty questions. You're giving us direction by approving this to say, yes, go reopen those conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Howe for schools?
Just had a, a kind of a question around interlocal agreements in general. I know that it pertains specifically to the, to, to fields and so forth, but is there the opportunity to expand that idea of interlocal agreement that could potentially include, say, their auditorium? Because we don't have access to that either. Now, I realize we did not pay any money specifically to improve it, but if we paid a rental fee or some kind of maintenance or, or something, perhaps that would give the community access to a performance space on a more predictable schedule. So I'd like to find out if there's an opportunity to expand what we mean by interlocal to, I mean, Cajun schools just in general, anyone that's got a stage.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add. Just want to highlight the last mile connections for non-moderized access. As we touched on, I think pickup and drop off is a big point of tension for traffic in the city. So any progress we can make there, very supportive of.
Awesome. Councilmember Treeen, school district and Parks and Trails.
And I'm going to take, I, I support what Pam's, Councilmember Stewart said about Puget Sound Region Councils, her comment there on public safety, excellent. Second, on the schools, very complex issue here because of the lack of real influence that we do have on school districts. But when I, when I read this list, the first thing I was looking at, big picture, was how does this list really impact the region? And, and then when I read it, the wording in it, not to wordsmith here, but the wording in it really is almost solely directed towards Sammamish. I, I think you might get further if this was a little more far-reaching. We do have three school districts that service us. So with that being said, we actually could have, if, if we're advocating or partnering to make certain things, like I'm glad you put in the youth mental health item in here. That's where I work. I know that's impacting all three school districts immensely. So why wouldn't we partner with all three of them and then stretch that out to a larger region? That gets us all the way down even into Renton with Isaguay School District. It pushes us all the way into Kirkland. It moves you all the way out to North Bend and could even then push us even further out or further in depending on how, what you're actually trying to do with that. So, so when I look at this, I think Sammamish could play a real pivotal role because of the fact that we have three school districts right here within our city. I just don't see that reflected in, in these objectives or goals. So that's the one thing I would change about this. I think they're all really good and, and should be all pretty much moved forward because, because then you're looking at federal dollars that's coming out. Okay. I won't steal any thunder. Parks and, so moving, is, am I clear on that one as to where Councilmember Treeen sits on that?
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Really good job, staff, by the way. Parks and Trails. So really what I'm, the, the challenge here is that, you know, again, it's, how do we make it so that, so I, I just see it's King County. How do I work with King County parks? They surround us, they got the trail that's down on the lake. So what are we doing to work, and the state, I guess the state, because you have Marymore Park, or excuse me, not Marymore, Sammamish State Park. So it's kind of like, okay, so how do I work with Redmond at Marymore? How do I work with King County? How do I work with state? There's my, there's my three. And then what is it that we can do to support them and how can they support us? Thank you.
Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, so from what I understand, we still have like $4 million earmarked for land acquisition. So I would maybe like to see exploring partnerships with groups like Forterra to secure more land for the city and, you know, best leverage those funds that we've made available. Yeah, that's all I have. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Yeah, kind of support what Councilmember Gupta said about Forterra. Also liked to, I liked the, the point number three when we mentioned the EMMR necklace and the completion of that. And we just, I think we have just that one section on the north end that's in King County And it would be great to kind of see the completion of that, the final completion of that. That's something that the city's been talking about since its inception. So it would be great to see the, the completion of the EMMR necklace once and for all. And if we could keep working on that, that would be great, but everything else looks good to me. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
So I just have a question actually about the second point. Does this include renegotiating leases? It's just an interesting list, actually, and rather finite and specific. The only thing that, I wouldn't change anything here, but.
I think we should look at all options as, you know, different milestones are triggered, you know, just through the calendar.
Sure. Okay. I have nothing to add. Councilmember Lamb?
I'd like the last line of increased waterfront access along the Eastlake-Sammamish Trail. There are opportunities. I'd like to see us, see what those are.
Councilmember Stewart?
All right. I love the Parks and Trails section. I plus one on Councilmember Gupta's suggestion around the partnership. I plus one on Councilmember Gupta's suggestion around the partnerships being with groups like Forterra, which also makes me think that there are partnerships like that available for sustainability as well, that I don't know, I'd have to go back and reread to see if we sort of have the right language that would include that as well. There is one that I thought of when Councilmember Treeen was talking about the schools, which is maybe providing regional support for school funding, because looking at how the state funds the schools and how we go about doing that, or if the schools have to do a bond or a levy, making sure that we're working in partnership with them on that, so that's all I have, thanks. Again, great work, really appreciate it.
So Mike and Rachel, I know you also chatted about, chatted, wow, asked about the regional letters sign-on. I think we only had one person mention it. Does anyone feel strongly or would like to discuss that as far as direction? Would anyone like to see on the consent calendar, like as a either this happened or a, okay, or can we do that? Cool, does that work?
That works.
Awesome. You got anything else for us, Mike?
I'm gonna jump in real quick. There was a second part to the agenda bill that just talked about the federal strategy. It doesn't need to be discussed if you all are good with it, but basically the bottom line is, it's time for us to start building some relationships, and that's what the plan is. And we may be coming back to you in the budget with some discussion about a federal lobbyist, but right now, we need to, we need to crawl, so we're gonna work on that right now.
Totally support that, yeah, thank you all.
I had some questions about the federal part. So I'm trying to understand, so a lot of the grants that we apply for are from the state, is that correct? How, do we, do we apply for the federal grants, much like Woodinville is?
Not that I'm aware of, and I think that's something that we want to start to position ourselves in a better spot to be able to do, so when we're looking for major infrastructure, things like that, we can do that.
Okay, so it sounds like we're actually missing a huge piece of the pie, because I was just reading that, like, the infrastructure bill, like, 60% was given to states and 40% was directly to communities, so 40% of that, like, billions of dollars cities would have to apply directly for. Which leads me to the other question is, if we are gonna go after these grants, it would make sense, and this has come up previously, to get a grant writer. I mean, it seems like it would pay for itself if we just got one grant. I mean, to seriously, like, go after some of these really big grants would, you know, obviously take a lot of time, and to, that would be applying for more grants than we have in the past, then perhaps we should entertain the idea of hiring a full-time grant writer.
I think that could be something that, you know, we have a discussion about during the budget process, right? Some of these big grants are sort of big lifts that may make more sense on a contract level versus some of the smaller kind of day-to-day grants, but we'll do some analysis on that and have that conversation as part of the budget process.
Do we know if any of our neighboring cities use federal lobbyists?
So I, I can't speak specifically, although I'm sure Bellevue has federal lobbyists, 100%, right? But in my experience in municipal government, most do have some version of a federal lobbyist.
Okay. All right, does anyone else have anything for Rachel or Mike? Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Treeen?
So, yeah, so I'd like to echo Councilmember Lamb's comments. I'd like to understand a little bit more about the specific policy goals or funding goals that we could hit by, you know, hiring a federal lobbyist. But I, I just wanted to mention, I am very supportive of stepping up our participation in NLC and taking the step of sending council members to those, to those events. I think that's gonna really help raise our profile, which seems like is a big part of this process.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I was just gonna throw, maybe it's a word of caution, but there's a cost to a lobbyist at that level, and so if lobbyist is actually procuring or securing monies that are spent in the city of Samamish, I see how that's beneficial, but the warning there to me is, if then a grant is pursued and received, often it is only a portion of the project, which then, in a sense, handcuffs the city council or the city to do that project and expend, have expenditures toward that project that may or may not actually be something that would actually benefit the city or be something that we would even financially, it would, maybe it destroys our sustainability. So, so weighing, I, I agree with Councilmember Gupta, I would be interested in getting more information on, like, kind of the outcomes and what does that really mean to the city, and then what are the benefits to the residents and to the city for doing that? I get it, it's money, but it's like, is it really a benefit to us if, and I have to increase your, I have to increase some other revenue to be able to pay for the full project?
And our commitment would be, if we bring that forward to you as a part of the budget process, we'll have that analysis there for you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Awesome, well, thank you, Mike. Do you have anything for us?
No, I think we're done, thank you, Council.
Cool, great, thank you. All right, let us move to the Sahawee Corridor study. Probably take a couple minutes. Council, if you want to take a, maybe a four-minute break, unless you guys are sprinting up here.
They're sprinting.
Okay, cool, all right. No, come on up.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. For the record, Audrey Sarsky, Public Works Director. I'm joined by the team, and I'll go ahead and introduce the team while they're getting set up. So Brent Powell is accompanying us today. He is the project manager and a senior engineer with Partite. He'll be overseeing the consultant team for this project. I'm also joined by Jed Ireland, Senior Engineer for the City. He'll be managing this project on the city side of things. And to my right is our Deputy Public Works Director Greg Stamatiyo, as well as our City Engineer Doug Van Gelder. And I think we're just working on technologies, just bear with us for a minute.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'll start just as the slides come up. Sahawee Corridor, if we'll go to the, go to the next slide, here's some photos. And so what we're gonna be talking about today is, basically, there's gonna be three elements to our presentation, and first, I will be giving just a high-level overview, and then I will turn it over to Brent, who will give us some context about the next steps and the schedule so that you know where we sit, and that, that'll help inform what we're asking of you for feedback on the goals and objectives. Also in orange here, we see the study limits. I'm gonna go ahead and start calling it the Sahawee Corridor, even though part of it is called 228th Avenue. The lower limit is Northeast 8th Street, and the north end is the intersection at State Route 202. Part of it is outside the city limit and in unincorporated King County. The last intersection within the city limit is Northeast 37th. So the current phase that we're talking about tonight is the master planning phase, and that's where we look at the alternatives analysis and picking what the project is gonna be, what's the corridor's final master plan. Future phases, you know, beginning next year, we can look at proceeding with design. And then, of course, from that could follow construction, so design could begin next year. So our main focus is, you know, establishing a vision for the projects that we can build in the near term and in the long term. That'll be a vision for a complete corridor that's supported by council and the public, and that is a durable plan. So the approach that we have is that we're gonna be starting with the goal setting here with you this evening, and then we're gonna be creating a feedback loop with the public so that they can give us feedback, and then we can get that information and it'll inform our alternative selection. Of course, we're gonna have inter-agency coordination because we're dependent on transit, and then also jurisdictions outside the city where we, whether we share the corridor with. We'll be having increasingly detailed technical analysis as we step through the alternatives and we reduce the number of alternatives that we analyze. And then, of course, detailed cost estimating is super important to this process for us to develop the phased corridor plan. And I think that's it, I think with that, I will turn it over to Brent. Oh, actually, I got one more slide. So I'll do this one, so this one shows that north of 25th Way, you can see that we pretty much have a rural road section with wide shoulders, and south of 25th down to Northeast 8th, we have kind of various states of improvement, generally sidewalk on one side, we have planter strips, curb and gutter on one side. The planter strip is actually variable width over this area, and we also have existing turn lanes that also vary in width and quality, and some of them are striped medians and some of them are raised medians, and some are just widened at the intersections for turn pockets. So that's the state of it, I think I covered it, and so now I'll turn it over to Brent.
All right, good evening, Council, Brent Powell with Partite, the project manager, as Audrey mentioned, for the consultant team on this corridor study and eventual design process. So tonight, we're just gonna talk through a lot of details about goal setting, but a couple kind of end-of-the-process matters that we wanted to get in front of you first was an overview of what we're doing in terms of developing and refining the alternatives that we're gonna be studying. So the envisioned goal for this process is to start with a large number of different potential options, and to whittle that down over time based on feedback we receive from you all, from the public, from our technical analysis and the various steps of our study. So we're in the first phase here, the, the blue shape here of goal setting, and we'll be parlaying that into building out 10 potential intersection and corridor alternatives. Then we're gonna work through a process to narrow that down to six alternatives and do a really detailed evaluation of those to build costs and footprints or comply with stormwater requirements and all the things that we want to make sure we're addressing upfront to have a really solid understanding of what this corridor might cost and what it could look like in the future. After that process, our intent is to continue to work with you all at, and also staff level, to figure out which of those concepts really bubble up to the top and are warranted and sharing back with the public for additional feedback. So Jed mentioned we have a feedback loop that we're trying to gain here, so we want to goal-set with, with both you and the public, and then bring concepts back that reflect those goals that we're hearing at the early stages of the project. That second stage of public outreach, and ultimately, again, feedback from you all in the council, will help us determine the preferred alternative, and then we'll do some further analysis and the documentation of a corridor plan, really that master plan vision. So in coordination with that, we do have several planned visits back to, to present to this council on this project, so the first one here, we're of course doing tonight, that's the goal-setting, but there's three more along the way. One would be to come back after we've studied those six concepts in, in strong amount of detail so that we can make the decision about which three to do and carry forward to the public. And then in 2025, coming back to discuss select a preferred alternative, and then also approval of the ultimate corridor plan, and ideally, an approval of a 30% design concept that we can move ahead with. And we recognize that's quite a bit of time between now and December, we don't want to leave you all in the dark, certainly, so as we're preparing technical materials, those will be published either online or to you directly, and we want to keep you in the loop that way at a minimum, so. So I'm gonna move ahead into the, the meat of this, this study update here, which is the goal-setting piece of it. What we're doing tonight is we're looking for feedback from each of you on goals and kind of policies almost that we could fold into this study, help us shape the vision that we, we ultimately build here. So I think every one of you walked in today, there was a piece of paper on your, your platform there that has some access instructions to an online survey. You may have also received an email linking you to this survey that's gonna get you to the same place, but we're gonna be using an online program called Mentimeter, and some folks may be familiar with that. You're gonna have to deal with me as I kind of walk us through a couple of practice problems. If you have used it before, those will be easy for you to go through, but our intent is to collect data in real time, and I'll actually be able to share that on the screen as we go. It will be anonymous, so we won't know which of the seven of you are, are giving each individual answer, but we will be looking for feedback on a couple of different types of questions. What we've done as a group leading up to this meeting is we've looked ahead and we've said, okay, we have eight potential project goal statements that we've developed, and we'd like council feedback on if you think those are important goals, maybe not important goals, or you're unsure. So one of the versions will be, we're gonna ask you to rate on a scale of one to five each of those individual goal statements, five being that you think they're very important, one being that you think they're not important. Then at the end, we're also gonna ask you to rank them against each other, so try to put all eight in your order from top priority to lowest priority. And then at the end of this survey portion, we do have some questions that we'd just like to open it up for, for general discussion and feedback on. So the first thing, I'm gonna kind of pause a little bit, is just let folks get into this platform here, and I'm curious if anybody has already logged in and submitted an answer. Okay, that's great, because I'm, the intent here is it's only the seven of you providing feedback. So first question, just to get experience with how to, to do this type of rating question is, how important is it to you to eat cake on your birthday? I'm seeing we've got six responses in, so I'm gonna be a little stickler here and see if, if anybody's having trouble, okay, great, we've got a seventh in, and the very importance take it, so. Next one here, as I click on the screen here and you look at your device, you should see it switch over to the next question, which is, put your favorite seasons in, in order there. So this is that ranking question comparing items against each other. As you kind of click on your device, they'll pop up and you can drag and drop them in the order you'd like. And just for all of these, remember, as soon as you hit that submit button, it is locked in, there's no option to go back and revise it. Okay, well, thanks for playing along with those questions there. We'll get to the meat of it here. So these are the eight statements that we're asking you to evaluate tonight, and I'm gonna talk through, I've got a slide for every one of them so we can go through the details. It's for a variety of different modes, potential uses of the corridor, potential ways the corridor could look, when we talk about urbanizing versus keeping it as more of a rural roadway, and then it questions about impacts and costs as well. So if you'll play along with me here, we're gonna have the slides running with your, your survey responses in real time, but the first goal statement we have is looking to add sidewalks or other pedestrian facilities to the corridor, and certainly, this corridor is quite long, so I think the, the merit of this question is, anywhere along the length of the corridor, would you like to see sidewalks added for certain blocks or, or maybe a majority of the corridor?
You're gonna need to define sidewalk? Because I don't know if you mean like the million dollar per, you know, three inches of sidewalk, or are we talking about a designated area that is, well, that is walled off in some way? Like has a curb or has something, an extruded curb that protects the walker? I need to understand, are we talking like for-real sidewalk?
Yes, I would classify this as a, a safe and comfortable pedestrian space to move.
Okay.
So that, that could be, it could be a sidewalk with a curb, it could also be a barrier that separates a pathway from the road.
How wide is the sidewalk? And is it on both sides of the road?
It's as wide as it should be, and I'm, I'm saying this more is, is it, are we valuing the pedestrian experience along the length of the corridor? That, that's the intent here. Okay. So generally, we're seeing very important for that goal, and that unsure in different category, I think, you know, speaks to that if you, if you really don't have a question, or you, you don't have an opinion one way or the other, or maybe you want public feedback to help you navigate. driver travel time on this corridor? And that's probably a lot of intersection treatments, but it could be things like additional lanes, an additional through lane in or out of the city. Sure.
So in my discussions with staff, I've been interested in potentially lowering the speed limit on the corridor. And from my understanding, that has the potential to increase throughput. But I'm not sure if that, how that reflects in this question. It seems like this is more capital investments to increase.
I would think of it more as capital investments. We do have a question actually at the end of the meeting here to gauge interest in lowering the speed limit.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So this one is trending towards the less important side of the spectrum there. That's great to know. How about for transit, though? Not driver travel time, but the concept of transit speed and also reliability. This could include queue jumps, it could include transit lanes. We don't necessarily want to limit it at this point. But I would emphasize this is not about transit stop improvements, it's about operational performance. Okay. Great. Okay, so those were the questions about modes and different users of the corridor. This question's more about the look and feel of the corridor. So when I throw this term up there, urbanize the corridor, I'm really thinking more, would you like this corridor to look more like it does today, which is fairly rural because it has shoulders and ditches on the sides, it doesn't have curbs and sidewalks? Or would you like it to look a little bit more like 228 does outside where it's got landscape medians, planter strips, city streetlight poles, things of that nature? So thoughts on the look and feel?
I had a question. So would urbanizing purely be aesthetic? Is there any safety that would, like improvements that would happen as a result of any of this?
There could be. Often when we install landscape medians and things like that, we're talking about lowering the speed limit. I mean, that tends to correlate with a little bit lower speed limit than the 45 miles an hour that we have out there today. And as we install things like sidewalks and bike facilities, that does get a little bit more of an urban feel, but maybe a shared use path is more of a rural feel. So there's still, there's still opportunities to do pedestrian and bicycle facilities in either context. But is that answering your question there?
Yeah, I was just interested from a safety perspective.
Yeah, because I think if you added the word safety, this would not look like that.
Right. Okay.
I think if you said safety, we'd probably be like fives, maybe.
We can, I should, I should have highlighted, this is not the end all be all of the goal statements. We are using this session to gain feedback, and if safety is a goal statement, we want to incorporate that as well. So I think when we have the opportunity in a minute here to talk through our questions, we can, we can raise that. But interesting to know that urbanizing the corridor just on its face, the look of it, not the highest priority of this group. So this next question here, before I unlock it for you all, just to speak as a project team, we are always trying to find low impact options to meet the needs of the project. But inevitably, there's sometimes trade-offs that we have to talk about. Is it, is it worth maybe, maybe it's a right-of-way impact, maybe it's a tree impact, maybe it's an environmental impact? And this question is really getting at, is that something that this council has appetite for, or is that something this council is very strongly against? So this will be, I think, very helpful as we do that ranking exercise and we see goals compared to each other.
Can I ask a question? So I just want to emphasize, so this isn't just about property impacts in terms of like we might need right-of-way. This is, because you mentioned like environmental impacts as well.
To me, that, yes, it's all encompassing.
Okay, thanks.
And again, if you think you kind of have flexibility in accepting some impacts, you'd want to rank this a little bit lower on the spectrum. Okay. Okay, so that's a little bit more of a mixed result, but trending towards avoiding impacts is important to this group. A similar question here with cost. Is cost, you know, the end-all be-all goal of this project? If so, you want to mark that as a five or a four. If cost is something that you think we can be a little bit more flexible on, score that as a one or a two. Oh, sorry about that.
So I have another question. So when you come up with the alternatives, would they be, I'm trying to think, like, would it be like low, medium, high costs? Or if we're all skewing low, would all the, all the alternatives be low?
Well, what I'm seeing here, there's a little bit of a mixed opinion. It's trending towards keeping costs down, as I would expect. Based on that, I'm thinking we provide a range of different options. So I talked about, we have 10 different concepts, we're going to start studying at the beginning. I would expect some of those would be a little bit more expensive, and some of those would be a little bit more bare bones, and some of them would be in the middle. So that we can make that assessment, not just at, you know, one meeting right now, but over time as we really start to evaluate alternatives. So that's the last of the ranking thing, or rating things one to five. Now I'm going to give you the option to put all eight of those goals and stack them against each other. And let's see what bubbles to the top as most important and falls to the bottom as the least important. So again, first place here, the top of your little device, that's going to be your most important goal. First place here, the top of your little device, that's going to be your most important Yes. In about two minutes, probably. All right, well, thanks for, for engaging in that survey there. That's, that's the end of it. You all are off the hook for the, the interactive portion. I think it's, it's very valuable for us to have this, this information. There's a couple of clear goal statements here that are dropping towards the bottom. I think as you have a chance to discuss over the next few minutes, it might be helpful to have some guidance on if those should be eliminated as goal statements or just put to the bottom of the priority list. But otherwise, I'm seeing a lot of strong energy behind, really the first, the first four in particular, and some, some energy as well behind the fifth and the sixth one. So with that, I'm going to put up on the slide the four more open-ended questions we have for you. I know it's quite a bit, but feel free to also provide additional feedback as well. And Mayor, I plan to pass this back to you to disperse amongst the floor here, but just to read through them, what problems would you like to try to solve on the Sahaliway corridor? And again, that, that includes that portion of 228 as well. Are there any specific goals you have for the study portion in particular? So maybe not end product goals, but the study itself. The question of should we evaluate lowering the speed limit? Is that something we have, we have some interest in? And then we also have public outreach coming up, and I think it may be helpful for us to know, if there's any questions you want us to ask the public, please let us know that so we can be sure to, to provide the public with those questions. And that could be questions right now or those could be questions later on, actually, when we present alternatives to them. So with that, Mayor, I will pass this back to you and give you the floor.
All right, Council, who wants to go first? I'm looking for hands. Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, just have a, maybe a question about the question. Could you maybe explain what you mean when you say goals for the study as opposed to goals for the project?
I think if there's any types of analysis that you need to see in the study, that's that, that's what that question is asking. So I mean, we have a scope, but we also do have a management reserve. There's flexibility potentially in the things we could evaluate. If there's anything that you feel is very important for you to make decisions down the road, we would like to know that sooner rather than later.
I think I forgot what was the scope. I mean, like, I know, I'm just like, geologic hazards. I'm like, oh, it's probably in there somewhere.
We, we do have a geotechnical evaluation. We have a structural evaluation for retaining walls because we expect there's going to be some significant walls. There's a big focus on stormwater and making sure that our designs for stormwater are compatible with the cross-sections we're developing, but also forward compatible as we expect there's going to be some significant changes in the stormwater codes coming up later this year. And then it's probably a lot of what you'd expect, Mayor, in terms of sidewalks and, or, you know, pedestrian facilities, bicycle facilities, transit facilities, roadway driver facilities, what is the right balance to seek there? And it goes back to that, that overview of starting with a large number of alternatives and narrowing it down based on discussions with staff, feedback from you, feedback from the council. And then publishing it in a full corridor report, master plan document that hopefully can stand for, for many years into the future as the guiding principle for what this corridor will become with ultimate design and construction projects.
Cool, thank you. I just didn't want to start saying things that were already there. Yeah, Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, so I definitely support examining lowering the speed limit. From what I understand, there's a benefit to safety, there's a potential benefit to throughput, and even maybe a benefit to costs in terms of the infrastructure that we have to, to plan for and install. So definitely supportive of that. Problems I would like to solve, let me find my notes here. So I'd like to focus on transit efficiency and access. I think we've heard from the community through the transit plan and, and this process that it is hard to get to a bus stop and to get to it safely. So looking at crosswalks, I think is going to be important. The way I envision the Sahaliway corridor is, that's our primary transit corridor out of the city, especially with the town center development and Redman Light Rail. I really see this as a transit-first project. So that connectivity, both in terms of performance and stop improvements, multimodal safety and connectivity as well, giving people more options to get on and off the plateau. Safety and efficiency, we got some public comments saying some residents feel even when multimodal improvements are made, it's maybe not efficient or convenient. So making sure that we're not just installing it, but we're installing in a way that actually incentivizes or encourages people to take, you know, reduce their VMT in the city. And then I'd also like to, this is maybe, this is maybe something I was getting at with the, the driver travel time. I'd like to maybe identify some near-term projects that would increase safety and throughput, not like huge capital investments, but intersection improvements, light improvements, things that will have an impact without maybe being huge spends. And I'd also like to, as we go through the connectivity piece and the non-motorized piece, make sure we're looking at external connections that we can hook up to the corridor. So ways that you can get to other places in the city using this improvements that we make on the corridor.
Deputy Mayor Howe.
Thank you. I think we're going to be pretty consistent on this in terms of the problems we want to solve are safety and efficiency. And whatever's the best way to do that with an emphasis on transit or some kind of public services along those lines. In terms of the goals that I personally have for this study is that it comes in early and below budget. But aside from that, what I would love to see is that we're able to make decisions quickly on things that are obvious. So if it becomes apparent that, you know, idea that we love A isn't going to work, we chuck it early and go to, you know, quick fail, quick fail, quick fail, so that we're moving through to get to the best reasonable solutions and have an understanding of what is the lifespan of those solutions? Is this something that, you know what, this is a quick win, this will work for 10 years, but it's going to fail in another 15? So to understand, you know, what is the duration of the solution you're proposing? You know, living for a long time, that's really hard to project because now we're talking about autonomous vehicles. Are you going to put sensors in the pavement? Or are they going to be in the light standards? You know, what, what's, what are your thoughts? So that I understand, you know, what that, that could look like over time as we continue to work on that throughput efficiency and of course, the safety component. I, I'm interested in lowering the speed limit and have been for quite some time and throughout the entire city, which will cause consternation. However, it's shown that that is a safety component, and for residents that have now reached certain ages, perhaps they don't run as fast as they used to, and giving them a couple of extra seconds to get across the street is a great idea if we want to have them here.
Are you running across the street?
You have to, so fast. And in terms of public opinion, I want them to engage on this because this is going to be struggling, this is going to be a struggle for them, I think. We mentioned taking a product, or potential for, you know, taking property or doing something to, that would potentially irritate residents. Lowering the speed limit is going to irritate people. The fact that we're not emphasizing speed, throughput in the same way that they might be emphasizing throughput is going to be confusing. So I think having graphics that clearly show, you know, advantages to solution A, B, or C, and data that backs it up, and maybe even a picture of the city where it's already working so that, what, what you, now you've got evidence so that it could, over, because this is going to take time, I think, to, to sink in. Thank you.
Councilmember Earl Farrell?
Thank you. I'm going to work from the bottom up because that's kind of the way my brain works. Any
Any topics that I'd like the, from the public? I would just like to hear what is their vision? What would they like to see this corridor look like at various intersections along the way? We have received some public comments. Said in some public comment in Sunday, and Audrey, I forwarded to you. So I'd love if you could take a look at that input and see how that kind of works with what we're doing. I'm very interested in lowering the speed limit 45 miles an hour, I think, personally. Not being a traffic engineer, seems to be kind of out of sync with a city. And the city's speed limits most seem around the area to be 35, 45 seems high. And I learned a long time ago from a traffic engineer that that actually helps traffic move faster when you lower the speed a little bit. So I'd be interested in entertaining that and seeing what that's all about. I'm not interested in expanding the scope of work right now and adding any extra goals. And what problems would I like to solve in this Sahaliway Corridor? Comes back to pretty much what everyone else has been saying. It's really about safety on this corridor, getting across the streets safer so they can get to transit. And making it easier for transit to move too. And I think if we identify safety improvements that we could make that may not necessarily involve huge capital input, but we could make some small improvements along the way that maybe we could do now that would kind of coordinate with a longer-term plan for the corridor. Maybe we have a long-term plan for the corridor, but we don't have the finances right now to build that out. But maybe there are small traffic improvements we could do now that would make some, that would help things along so that we have kind of like short, medium, long-term goals for various sections along the way. I think that would help planning. It would help the public see that we are moving along. We're not just kind of saying, oh, yeah, well, in 20 years' time, this corridor will look like this. So that we have kind of short, middle, and long-term goals for how this would look and maybe then how we're going to finance that.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. Looking at the problems we want to solve, one of the first and foremost is actually sustainability. And from that comes the safety, right, for the non-motorized. Because if we're not looking at it from a sustainability perspective, we don't have as much non-motorized activity on the road. So I kind of look at that as we really want to solve the sustainability problem. But, and I know we didn't ask for goals for the project, but safety for the non-motorized travel is a really high priority for me, right? It is not, it is not a safe or happy place to be there right now unless you're in a car. So I think that's really important. Safety for motorized is obviously always going to be important as well. But really looking at also how do we prioritize, incentivize, encourage any kind of travel that isn't sort of the personal, individual people in their autos, right? So, and I say that, I know that sounds kind of cagey, but when I tried to say like, I want non-motorized, well, it could be transit. But transit also doesn't necessarily mean a bus. Like, it could be carpools, right? So that's an individual car, but not an individual person, right? So I want us to look at sort of how do we move more people more efficiently? And that really goes back to that sustainability. So those are the problems, I think, that I want to see us really tackle. Again, looking at that safety, it is not a happy, safe place to be. And I think safety also includes things like, if we're going to encourage transit, do we have a safe place to wait for transit? Those types of things. Goals for the study, I would love to see sort of what is the rubric that you guys come up with that you use to evaluate the alternatives that you get? I would love to understand the trade-offs because there are always going to be trade-offs. We can do this, but it's going to cost you. Or we can do this, but we have to give up that. I want to see something that isn't necessarily a one-size-fits-all. I don't know that there will be one thing we do to the whole corridor. I think we're going to see section by section that there may be different things we have to do. And so being creative and innovative like that is great. And yes, let's be creative and innovative. I think Deputy Mayor Howe was sort of getting at that. But like, what are some of the really crazy solutions? Like, what if we didn't allow left turns and we only had traffic circles and you had to go up and turn around or something? I don't know. Like, I want us to kind of look at all of those different things as long as they're going towards safety and optimizing for transit. And then the other thing, and I don't know if this will come out of the study, but as we evaluate these things, some of these price tags are going to be really big and it's going to give people sticker shock. But if we look at it on a per household or a per capita basis and we start to look at that cost, which some of these will be capital improvements and they'll be one-time costs compared to, it now costs $10,000 a year to own and operate a car. And most people in Sammamish, most households have more than one car. So if you're looking at $20,000 or $30,000 a year that we're spending on cars compared to what are we going to spend per household one time to enable the transit? And what's that really going to cost us over time? I think that's one of the things we're going to have to look at. So I don't know if that comes out of the study, but I think that as we start to look at what solution are we really narrowing in on? Can we do that kind of a cost-benefit analysis to take that out to the public? Because I think that's really important. If you just look at $10,000 a year times 20,000 households, right, in one year, that's a lot of money, right? So I think that there are ways that we can present this that makes us be like, oh, my God, that's a lot of money. But over five years or 10 years, it's really a bargain compared to the alternative of we just keep having more cars. And that doesn't even necessarily factor in the cost of the pollution, right? Sustainability costs us money today. We all talk about, oh, it's going to cost us a lot to convert our, you know, leaf blowers to electric. But what's the cost if we don't? Every day, it gets more and more expensive to mitigate that. So I'd like to see that coming out of the study as well. Yes, I'm in favor of lowering the speed limit where it makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
So yes, I am also in favor of lowering the speed limit. I just wanted to touch a little bit on improving driver travel time. It ranked at the very bottom. And it's not that, and we've heard this, you know, from the other council members, it's not that we don't want to improve driver travel time. I understand that was really kind of the driver of kind of, of this project was, you know, there were intersections that needed improvement. And we wanted to improve travel time. And I would say, yes, I want to improve driver travel time. And I would have ranked it up higher if there were qualifiers such as, you know, we'll start with just the intersections and do minimal capital costs. I think all of us want to improve driver travel time. It's just that, you know, there's a cost that we're not willing to pay.
Councilmember Trine?
I'm going to follow Councilmember Farrell and start from the bottom and move my way up. Are there topics you'd like to know what the public opinion is? Yeah, is it really, is, because we, I think the council would agree, safety is number one. So does the public also represent that? Are we representing them on that for this project and this scope? The other topic is, is if the impact that is, there's two items on impact. What's the impact and the cost? And one would be on the, first is on the environment. Are we willing to, does the public want to move forward with this kind of a project? If, depending on what is the impact on the environment? And if that cost is too high, then what are you going to do? The second one would be the impact on the community financially. If the actual cost to do the Cadillac, well, how about the Bugatti? You know, driving down to the bottom of the hill versus, you know, what does it cost to having the jalopy go down the bottom of the hill? Okay, so whichever parameter or somewhere in the middle, you know, what is the public's opinion on what they're really willing to pay? So that's it. Should we examine lowering the speed limit? I'd say examine lowering the speed limit, but if you, if, if one of the specific goals you have in the study is what I'll bring up next, maybe you don't have to lower the speed limit. So that leads me to, so I think you should look at it, but there's a possibility you don't have to lower the speed limit depending on what your specific goals are for this study. I think when Pateet came to us last time, I remember, looking at anything on transportation, they provided us with two options or two scenarios on how you could improve this particular corridor. And one of them was roundabouts and the other one was with lights. And I think the consultant was pretty clear that the roundabouts was the better idea. It was the safest. It would also solve a lot of the other problems. And you could actually incorporate some of the aesthetics that are necessary that was mentioned as some of our priorities. So a specific goal should be, you need to come back to me, at least as one council member, which one are we doing? Are we doing traffic lights at the intersections or are we doing roundabouts? And I just need to know that. That should be a specific goal. Actually, it's already been done, so I don't even understand. There's no cost to that one. We've already paid for that. So bring it back forward and let us see how that works into the current work you're going to do. What's the problem? I can't get out of my neighborhood. Okay, sorry. I can get out of my neighborhood because of where I live. I'm talking about the residents who live along Sahaliway Corridor. They can't get out of their neighborhood. That's what they're saying. Is that true? Okay, I'm just going to trust them that that is true, that they're having challenges getting out of their neighborhoods. So how does that, how does this Sahaliway Corridor solve that problem for the residents? Is that lights? Is that roundabouts? Is, okay, whatever. Let's be clear about the other problem I think you're facing here is 97%, and I'm going to say it's probably higher than that. But based on the statistics that transportation is putting out there, 97% of the residents of Sammamish drive their cars off the plateau. 3% are going in some other mode of transportation. So how are you going to solve the problem that 97% of the people are getting in their car and they're going off the hill? So that's a problem. What's the solution? Is it really transit? Depends on how long this plan's going to last. So I like what Councilmember Howe was talking about. What's the duration at which you're going to present something to us? I'm doing, we are going to approve a comprehensive plan update that's going to cover 20 years. In 10 years, we get to relook at it and look at it again and see how we're doing. Five years, they're going to look at some of our stuff. But the reality is, is really in the next 20 years, what kind of transit are we really going to have to the, to the plateau, to Sammamish? Well, when I look at it, and you can, you should, go talk to Kelly Hildy and go just walk into her office and look at her map of Sammamish. And there's clearly a plan was put in place in 2020 on how to handle transit, and now I'm saying transit, to the light rail station. So one of the problems you need to solve is this transit issue and how are you going to get people to get out of their cars and get down to the light rail? So are we looking, so solve the problem. And are we really looking at a dedicated lane for transit? Is that, what's, and then what, back to my other challenges, right? What's the cost if we do that? And can it be even done knowing full well that that hillside is a landslide hazard area? So as soon as we start adding weight to it, which is roadway, then we have a challenge. So, good job. I mean, go for it, but, you know, how are you, that's a, and then are you going to use Inglewood Hill down to Sahal, or to Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway? Are we going to create a loop? Because if it's just traffic going, I mean, I don't think sound transit, to be honest with you, or metro, they're not coming up the hill with any better service than they're doing today. Maybe if we, if for some reason people all of a sudden start getting in transit. But most of the people who are doing transit are driving somewhere and then catching the bus. I either go to the Highlands, I go to Issaquah, I go out to Redmond, then I get on a bus. All right, there's not a lot of traffic that's flying over the top. So why are we fooling ourselves? I think that part of the, well, maybe this is tied into the transit study. So grab the transit study and say, hey, over the next year, do we really have a transit that works? I'm going to tell you, no, it doesn't work. Oh, for 1% of the population. So why would I spend $900,000? Never mind. I'll refrain from voicing my displeasure because I was the opposition to even doing this. So sorry about that, Mayor. Sorry. That was out of line. I apologize for that.
All right. So the 45 miles an hour, is that all the way to 8th? Or does it stop like somewhere? That speed limit? I thought it stopped.
I believe it reduces down to 35.
Like something past maybe Evans Creek or right there? Yeah. No, I was just curious because I was like, so the 45, like basically from 202 to wherever that is? Yeah, cool. So I'm totally supportive if that's what looks better or as far as the study goes of lowering that. Definitely support, obviously, the transit sheltering. I think we've heard that, you know, multiple times in getting to and from. The bus lane thing, I mean, I like the one where it's like has its own bus signal so it gets to go right in the middle and then in front of everybody before the light turns green instead of like a whole dedicated lane. And then I don't know, since some of this is not our road, what does that look like with King County or unincorporated King County? You know, cost, cost sharing. If we make a study, can they put in whatever we need? I don't know.
Well, that would be amazing.
Yeah, that's why I'm like, we did the study, now you build it. Yeah.
But I think this, it also, you know, kind of eludes to our earlier conversation tonight too, and really forming those regional partnerships and working with our neighboring jurisdictions.
Cool, yeah. And just if they're aware of this, because I think that's something, it's probably, like you said, we've had this study or done this before. So, yeah, safety, obviously, the big one. And then I think what Councilmember Lamb said about the travel time, because it is important, but then when you look at everything else, I had to put it at the bottom because I'm like, everything else seems so much more importenter. So, and then I think Deputy Mayor Howe, is one more thing?
One more quick thing. Because it, to me, it's driver experience. So it isn't like the hard and fast data that says, oh, it's 35, it's 45, or whatever. It's what's the driver experience? Even when we got to the questions about what does it look like? It's the driver experience. It's, so whatever the public thinks is a reasonable experience will be fine. But trying to manage to that and getting the public to say what they want their driver experience to be in language that is actionable. So that, that would be that piece that I would want the public's opinion on.
All right, Council, does anyone else have anything? Then I'll leave it to you all if you want to say anything else. And thank you for being here.
No, thank you. That was, that was very helpful. I don't know if it's my turn to speak or not, but I think this is a very helpful goal, information. And I'm hearing a clear safety goal in addition to the ones we've presented to you. And I'm also hearing that even though it fell to the bottom of the list, the driver travel time is still a goal, but it's a lower priority goal potentially here. So I think we'll digest this feedback and, again, thank you from my perspective.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. It was really thoughtful feedback. And part of the exercise tonight was we recognize that all of the goals that we presented are, it's hard to prioritize those. And it'll be some difficult decisions coming up in the next few months as we work through alternatives. So that was part of the exercises to see how those may align. So this was really helpful feedback and just thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here. It's so many of you this time. So, yeah, nice to see you all. All righty, so I think now we have our public comment. So we'll start in the room and then if anyone signed up, what was that, by today at some time? Be on Zoom by 3:00. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay, Sayed?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I sent you an email highlighting a number of goals going from four. I'm delighted to hear what the consultants' goal and getting the feedback from the council. And tonight was very good sessions. But I still, I would really encourage the council to direct the staff to incorporate those comments that I made as far as potential goals into the process. And also, I pointed out in my email, and I haven't heard that much from the staff, is that there is an RCW that actually makes reference to the, I highlighted in the staff report, called Complete Street. And that is mandated if you're looking for some money from the state. So I would highly encourage the council to be aware of it and direct the staff to look into it and use the concept of the Complete Street as a part of that. The other one is that, I heard it, but there is a word called context-sensitive design. And that is a federally mandated process that basically says that when you put in a plan together for a transportation, go to the community, get the feedback. a plan together for a transportation, go to the community, get the feedback, be, be aggressive as far as getting them involved in every, every part of the decision-making. And that is something that is important. Other than that, I think that we're looking forward to the next step of the project.
Great. Thank you. Denise, did you want to?
Sure.
Okay.
I know you've all been sitting and listening for a long time. You haven't had a break. My goodness. Okay. Denise Stielder, now Sammamish, Sammamish Woods. Just a couple of things. First of all, I enjoyed watching everyone at the retreat and talking together. It's been great to learn more about everything. And secondly, on a different note than what I usually talk about, is I really enjoyed meeting the Sustainability Committee. So we went and watched at the meeting. I know several of you were there too. Like Sid, you were there. And it was really great. We, I was incredibly impressed by who you all picked, their credentials and their excitement about it was really cool. And we met several other people who are as into composting as I am and styrofoam and everything else. So it gave me a lot of encouragement that there's a lot of other people in our city feeling the same way. And when we met with them, we talked a little bit about the styrofoam ban that's coming up. And we can send you an email too, if you didn't get it already. And that's something I really would love our city to be proactive with. With the plastic bag ban, I felt like it sort of all came towards us, but the businesses didn't really know about it. So this time with styrofoam ban, I'd love to have like our takeout places and all of our businesses be really aware that Sammamish is following through on having the styrofoam ban. And by the way, we've had a plastic bag ban too. And even trying to have some kind of central location where we could get the Kent Styro business, which is the only place in the entire state of Washington where you can go and take your styrofoam to recycle. And if you haven't been there, I'd encourage you to go. It's really actually quite fun. It's a woman-owned business and they take all the styrofoam, sell it, and they make, you know, park benches and everything like that. And so they're the ones that come to that household waste, you know, in the summer that you organize. I would love to see them being able to come extra due to the styrofoam ban for Issaquah and Sammamish. Maybe we work together with Issaquah. So the businesses who have their extra takeout containers can turn them in. Part of the law is you are forbidden to use your styrofoam containers once the law begins. So hello, there goes all this waste into the landfill. So that would be something I think would be nice. The other thing I want to mention tonight is I really liked how much they're going to survey the Sahali people and the community. I would love for us to do that again about the town center, to survey our community about any changes or things we want to do about it, to make sure people really know what's going on. And I really would love to have some input by citizens into the newsletter. We got the beautiful newsletter, you know, a couple of days ago. And it would be so nice if there could maybe even be an opinion page or a list of where you can recycle things. Or the local high school theaters, all were doing plays the last two weekends. And like the lovely Lunar New Year advertisement, it would be really nice to have the theater groups be able to list their plays.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for listening.
Yeah, thank you. Debbie? All right. Awesome. All right. Online, if we have anybody that signed up?
No one pre-registered.
Great. Thank you. All right. We're going to move to, Rachel, do you have any thing to say? Words of wisdom?
I do have a couple of things. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate and thank our Parks Department and our partners for the Lunar New Year event. We had over 3,000 people through the doors over that. So congratulations to all of them, all of that great work. That's really exciting. We also got to debut our efforts around our video time capsule. I know three of you up here did it. And Rich in the back, I want to say thanks for all of your work. It sounds like there was some excitement in the community to get moving on that. That was our, I just want to remind you, that was our first event for that. We'll be having three more opportunities for people to do that and as well as provide that information or provide a video online. So it's great. We're going to be using that content throughout the year, hopefully to put out there to get more folks involved as we move forward. And then finally, not to steal the thunder from at least four of you, but I appreciated the opportunity to be at the YMCA breakfast this morning, get to know the community a little bit better. So thank you for that opportunity.
All right. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I was wondering if we could maybe have a sort of general consensus or not on whether we want to send a letter supporting House Bill 1433, which is the House bill that will require the, what do you call it, like the rating system for homes and buildings and stuff, which is a line, a specific line item in our cap. And so there is a, there is a, a timing issue. So that has to move out of committee by the 21st. So if that's something that we're comfortable with and then we can send the letter and then just put it on the consent calendars and FYI at our next meeting, that would be really awesome. Are you good? Do you see enough head nods to say you're okay?
The letter will go out tomorrow.
Thank you! And then I did want to just address that the Sammamish Chamber has launched a new website and part of that is actually a community calendar, which is really cool because that will be an opportunity for like our local high schools who have plays and things to be able to put that in. It'll all be in one place. So go check that out. I know it just launched, so I don't know that there's a lot of events on the community calendar yet, but anyone in the community can submit events that are going on. And I think that's going to be a really awesome thing. So I'm super excited about that. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
I just had a quick council report. I have a Public Issues Committee meeting on Wednesday. The main topic is the King County Regional Homelessness Authority will be just giving us an update on what has been happening. And I have two other board meetings. One is the Solid Waste Committee meeting and a Board of Health. And I will get the agenda out to everybody.
Great. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Howe?
And we have an EMAC meeting tomorrow. Excuse me, that's an in-person meeting. And we've started to make connections with Eastside Fire and Rescue back into the EMAC team, which is the Emergency Management Advisory Committee. So we've actually made good contact now with our zone commander, or coordinator, rather. And what I'm optimistic about is that maybe we'll be able to leverage what King County can do to help us with some of the grants that we'd like to make for Eastside Fire and Rescue to help refurbish some of the equipment.
Oh, sorry. You looked excited, Councilmember O'Farrell. Maybe that's just to leave. I'm not sure. Yeah. I was like, yeah.[1783.26]